Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. Our Constitution, our Constitution, and the Constitution deliver to you justice and справk.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Evans as temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have been and still moved.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessors Results Report for Hearing Date Held, May 2, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting Held, May 9, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Lackawanna County Land Bank Held, April 13, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D Check Received, May 3, 2018, from Comcast, in the amount of $256,023.13 for quarterly franchise fee payment.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have a couple, just reminders. One reminder, the Armed Forces Parade is Saturday at 11:00 a.m. I encourage anybody that could make it to attend. And tomorrow's Election Day. So I encourage everybody to go out and vote. A couple polling place changes in the city. People who, from Scranton, 19-1, who used to vote at the Renaissance Center, will now vote at Whittier. And also, 19-2, which used to be at the 606 Social Club, will now, will also be at Whittier. And then also, anyone that votes at, that voted previously at St. Anne's, will move to West Scranton Intermediate School. That's all I have.
And I just have one, just to keep the family of Patricia Poopsi-Renda of North Scranton, in your thoughts and prayers. She passed away last week, and she was 101 years old from North Scranton. Thank you.
For a couple announcements. City Hall will be closed tomorrow, Tuesday, May 15, for Election Day, reopening on Wednesday, May 16. DPW will be working tomorrow. Refuse and Red Recycling will be picked up this week on regular schedule. As Councilman Donahue mentioned, the annual Armed Forces Parade will be held this Saturday, May 19, beginning at 11:00 a.m. The parade starts at the Geno Merly Veterans Center and moves south on Penn Avenue, east on Lackawanna, and north on North Washington Avenue to Courthouse Square. Please support our veterans and be mindful of road closures for the parade route if you are traveling through the downtown. Also, a note of congratulations to recent graduates of Johnson College, as well as Marywood University and Lackawanna College students who will be graduating this Saturday. And that is all.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hoda-Wannitz.
Joan Hoda-Wannitz, city resident and taxpayer. I see we have another very light agenda, so hopefully a lot of work is getting done behind the scenes, like the audit. My first question is, I see from the Times-Tribune article of last Tuesday morning that Mr. Bolzoni is back as the business administrator. My question is, is the mayor going to request another residency waiver? Or are we just going to pretend the Home Rule Charter doesn't exist? You can discuss that during Fifth Order. Also during Fifth Order, if you've given us an update on when the garbage bills went out, if in fact they did, and what caused this year's delay, so it doesn't happen again next year. Though I personally don't get a garbage bill because we have a private waste hauler at the Forum, I do pay taxes and I look for efficiency in government. And I'm curious as to why, two years in a row, we had a substantial delay. Okay, now, I'm glad you mentioned voting tomorrow and the Armed Forces Day Parade on Saturday. And Sunday, if you have nothing better to do, and you have little ones, at the Lackawanna County Children's Library, we will have the Zoommobile from the Ross Park-Binghamton Zoo. This is at 2:00 p.m. on Sunday. It was delayed a week because of Mother's Day, and all you have to do is call the library at 348-3000, extension 3015, to register your children. They'll love it. They'll see all kinds of birds of prey and other little critters and have a great deal of fun. And then, I know this is early, but you see I'm wearing my "Swinging on Vine" tee-shirt for this year. As you know, the Albright Memorial Library, the Scranton Public Library, is celebrating 125 years of service to the community. So on Friday, May 25, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will have our ninth annual fundraiser, "Swinging on Vine," which occurs on Vine Street, right in front of the library. Now, this is an event for adults only, because there will be beer, and there will be wine, and there will be margaritas, and a lot of food, and a lot of sweets. In fact, we're going to have paramedics there, in case you go into a sugar coma. So it's $20 in advance, $25 at the door. You can get tickets at the Albright Memorial Library, the Nancy K. Holmes Branch in Greenridge, the Library Express at the Marketplace at Steamtown, or at the Albright.org website. And I hope you'll all be there. This is a wonderful event. Right behind that will be the Friends of the Scranton Public Library Book Sale, from June 5 through June 10. I've given all of you copies of these announcements. Again, we'll be selling books, DVDs, and CDs, and audiobooks for $1 to $2 apiece. It's a great fundraiser. And if that doesn't light your fire enough, we have a flyer, and I'll get copies for you and for your bulletin boards. Some requests at the library. Lots of things to see and do in Lackawanna County. A lot of times I hear speakers come up here and say, "There's nothing for kids to do in this city." Well, we got rocks and minerals at the museum at Everhart, railroads rock at the Steamtown National Historic Site, rock on Children's Day at the Catlin House, which is the Lackawanna Historical Society, Legally Blonde Junior at the Scranton Cultural Center, Rock with Miners at the Anthracite Heritage Museum, and Arts Engage Day at the Electric City Trolley Museum and Station. So all this is in Scranton. And this is for our children. This is part of what the Lackawanna County Library System coordinates in support of all the county libraries, and all these events are in Scranton. So there's a lot for the children to do in the summertime. So with that, I hope to see your friendly little faces at the Armed Forces Day Parade on Saturday. I will be there. And at the Zoommobile on Sunday. And by the way, that book sale that we do every quarter, we pay for events like that. The second Sunday at the Children's Library is always sponsored by the Friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ray Pilch. I apologize if I mispronounced that. I do see that you're a resident of Music. We will allow you two minutes, but just so you know in the future, the council meetings are for Scranton residents.
Ray Pilch, as you know, the, by the way, I'm the treasurer at Masonic Temple, Scottish Rite, so, you know, case or not. Last week I was here, what the status of the noise ordinance in Scranton, is there any?
We did, and I apologize, I wasn't here last week, but I did talk to our city clerk. We did send correspondence to our police chief. I know he was out of town for a couple days, so we haven't heard back as of yet. But we have your contact information, so when we do get a correspondence, we'll make sure that you're the first to know.
I appreciate that. That's all I, you know, you can't do things that, you know, the problem is the top of the mountain. It's going over states, over Scranton lines and music, and, you know, the big problem is, it's loud. When they have a concert, I have no problem, like I said, the Pert Peach Festival, but Camp Bisco is have, having acts at 2:30, 3:30, 4:30 in the morning. That's, so, whatever can be done.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, we do have a correspondence out, and our chief is very good at getting back to us, so you should hear from us next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hello, counsel. I would like to thank somebody from the city for all the work they've been doing the last couple months at Western Park. They got the baseball field all completed, and they're working on the swimming pool. And I go down to the river every day with my little puppy. Somebody, some group cleaned it all up where the fishermen are, I have no idea who, but they did a real nice job. It was just, it was bad down there. People use it to dump all the time. And I have a first cousin that can't stand me in San Francisco. He's a liberal yuppie that teaches his whole life at the university, and I don't know what he taught, but he's, he knows Chinese. Anyway, I phoned him about something, my family, and he said, we were talking about the, he gets out his computer and can see a little bit about Scranton. He said he couldn't see a reason in the world this school system couldn't have 40 children in a classroom with all the financial problems they have. That'd be 250, 300 teachers for 10,000 children instead of, well, we got 850. And he's, he's one that would have homeschooling and a teacher for every child if it was up to him. Somebody asked me where I was last Monday, just like I missed supper or something. 5:30 in the morning, I went to have coffee, and I was informed Mr. Bolzoni was coming back, and it just ruined my day. If I'd come in here with, as mad as I was, I would have made Bob Leach look like an angel. Anyway, he's back. I guess we'll just have to live another few years with his addicts. And Mr. Evans, I know you know what this is.
I can't see it from here, but...
This is a foreclosure notice. This is the end of the most cherished position that anybody can have their home. This is just one of thousands from this area. These people owe $4,732.10, and they've, they've lost it. They don't have, they can't pay it with the garbage fees and everything else. And I blame this loss and all the rest of them, I knew people. Mr. Amosel giving away all our money, and Bolzoni supporting downtown like he is. Nothing for people like this, nothing. It's, it's, these are the people that made this city. I don't know, he told me how many years he'd lived there, I've forgotten. It wasn't that long, eight, 10 years, but this is such a heartbreak for, for, for everybody. It's a heartbreak for the city for someone to lose their house. I don't know, it's abandoned right now. They've, they're gone from it. This says it'll be advertised at the sale. And what happened first, they cut off his gas. It says at the bottom, they want $73 to put the gas on. The man just didn't have money left for anything after, after years of abuse by the city. This reminds me of a guy I told I'd give him an air conditioner. He didn't have a car or nothing. He's, he's gotten rid of everything trying to save his house. Something has got to be done about this tax base and this mess the school board's in. And Mr. Donahue, you need to learn some diplomacy, not to burn your bridges. One of these days, you might need something from the county commissioners. Just learn some diplomacy. You don't have to come out trying to be the strongest one sitting up there.
Thank you, Ms. Troma.
Mr. Evans can get away with it. Mr. Rogan, you're too young. You're just a pup.
Next speaker is Bob Bowles.
Evening, counsel. Bob Bowles, Scranton. Just regarding some of our election stuff here, today I had the opportunity to lunch with Mr. Wagner, Mr. Bartos, up at Chick Steiner, one of the most famous political places in the country. And as a Republican, you know, I'm back in Peters, who's one of us, and Barletta. Hopefully, they'll be the ones that are going to take the front running for us. The biggest disappointment I had is in Luzerne County, not like Lackawanna County. Luzerne Republican guys down there, their party, went endorsed in a primary because they were bought off, which is the worst thing you could do to any candidate, is sit there and endorse a candidate against the other candidates, let everybody fight it out in the primary, then get behind them in the general. Mr. Hinton has created, over these containers, a major and costly legal problem that the city's going to face. Because he's going to go around, and he better be flat out, because I had enough of his stupidity and his nonsense and his ignorance in the trade, to say what a container is or isn't. So everybody that's got a container in this city, he's got to file a notice with them based on what he said, and I've sent him pictures all over the city, to both him and the mayor, and he better start doing his job. Same thing he did with me, he better start doing and moving all these containers. Mr. Gahan, you always like to be the front runner here on the mulligan. Are you going to push or make a motion tonight that the SOR authorities sue Mulligan to get our money back? Since you want to be out front all the time, and I know you were a supporter of them, but are you going to push and ask counsel tonight?
Mr. President, I'm not going to engage Mr. Bowles here in getting into a back and forth. Thank you.
Well, as always, you run from the problem. Anyhow, I guess you're not going to bother to do it. Hopefully, other members of the council will do it. The mall then maybe want to push and get a reassessment there to help the taxpayers. You know, one of the things, you and Mr. Donahue sent a letter on the nurses, and this'll be the last time I raise it, but let me tell you what the letter does. It does nothing. Because your letters have been unimportant anyway. After all, you are a liar, and you lied about letters. But it was more important if you had stood, and don't shake your eyes, you lied in this council, you lied that you sent a letter, and you didn't send it, it's a lie. And as a good Christian, you should know the Ten Commandments, don't lie. Okay? And as a public official, you should resign, no more than you did in Washington or anywhere You should have stood there on a podium and gave something of yourself, got all the TV attention, the news attention, and spoke out on behalf of the nurses, instead of making some frivolous excuses while you were more important than going there. You represent this city, and not by a letter to some clown sitting in an administration office that could care less, that put these people out on strike. So if you're going to represent the city, then I suggest you get out there and represent the city and its people. That's what you're here for. Some of the things, you know, I sit here and I listen to you about you're going to do this and do that, and get this done and get that done in the city, but you can't do it without the help of the administration. So my suggestion is, you guys in bond, get down to meet with the mayor and his administration to get the things done that you keep reading you're going to do this, or somebody sent you a letter about that. You can't do anything. You're only one person sitting up here. And act like a god up here that you're going to get it all done isn't a possible feat on your part, just because of the structure we have here in the city. And the vets, I think we should put a $1 fee out and ask everybody voluntarily to contribute it, to help them with PTSD. We have a parade honoring our people, but nobody's honoring all those that didn't come home, or those that came home with PTSD. I brought a physician here from Florida at my expense on PTSD to do a study, and we've gone nowhere. So now I'm asking everybody here to chip in $1 toward a funding to help our veterans get by what they need to do, and get a study done at the college and through Geisinger that are equipped to do this. Those are the important things. And on Saturday, we're going to honor them, but how many are going to honor those that didn't come home? And, you know, we could go on and on and on about what goes on around here, but, you know, nothing disappoints me more than people sitting here and saying they should take and endorse recreational marijuana. I've been in the towing and recovery business. I know what happens out there. And people that'll sit here and say it's the greatest thing. I understand certain drugs could help in cancer victims and people who stay confined and stay home. I'm all for it. Anything that'll reduce pain and help somebody with suffering, but not somebody that's just going to light up a joint, jump in one of my trucks and say it's legal, get on the road, and kill one of you guys or your families. That's the problem I have, and that's what we should be against.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, president. Just paid my trash fee today. So you're a little richer, anyway. I have a challenge here for those people who are fighting our small-time taxes, as egregious as any tax could be, Mr. McGovern, or interested attorneys. Take the state and county to court for saddling us with 35% tax exempt as excessive, if necessary to the Supreme Court. Everybody seems to have criticism for us, that we can't make ends meet, but how do you make ends meet when 35% of your, your income is just up in smoke? And very little of it is actually our property, so. We just got into some medical cannabis situations here, and the reason that we had a commissioner ask why, she mentioned she hadn't seen any studies on it. And for 45 years, the law in the DEA banned on authorizing studies of any potential benefits or neutrality, only harm. That was the only way you could get it authorized, to study any type of cannabis product. Also, in Pennsylvania, and I have a paper here to prove it, if you engage in such practices, you generate metabolites. And when I, when, I hope it'll return to People's Law School, and the year before last, the District Attorney's Office mentioned that if you have, now, a metabolite is something that you can't be inebriated on. It's, okay, it's, your body turned it so that it's neutralized. If you have any in your system even days later, you can be arrested for a DUI. So I don't know who finagled that in, but it's like, we have, what, 10 attempted arsons, and nobody caught in Scranton. So I would agree with Mr. Perry and his comments last week. I think it's about time that we let them ride, let the police ride around in a neutral, unmarked car and see if they can catch anybody at stuff like that. Somebody's really going to get hurt. And by the way, beware of any street drugs, because they could have high-tech, high-tech drugs sprayed on them to enhance the, the effect, and those are very dangerous. Trash, recycled barrels used for trash should be indelibly marked and then fined if continued. So I also have a little thing in the paper here. I'll circle it for you people quick, and I'll leave it with you. Here it is, here it is. Okay. Here's the name. You should recognize this name, because they've been before, counsel before, but it has to do with attempts to even, speak out against it. The next thing you know, everybody's stomping on you. Now, I'm totally neutral on what's going on here, but I would support it for medical use. And by the way, I was going to do it, talk about it last week, but I forgot. Thank you, and have a good night. That's just a joke.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. According to today's paper, four, or three out of the next six days will have thunderstorms, and the, and another will just have plain old rain. So I'm just wondering, and if you guys might like to consider whether you would rather be the Youngs, or whether you would rather be, live over in Kaiser Valley with Lenny and his neighbors. Consider that when you're sitting at home and it's pouring outside. The owners or occupants of houses according to our ordinances are supposed to, let me just read it. The owners or occupants of houses, dwellings, and buildings in the city of Scranton, and all persons who erect houses, residences, and other buildings within the city of Scranton after this chapter becomes effective, are hereby required to attach an assigned street number displayed in position easily observed and readable from the public right-of-way or street. And it goes on to give the specifications. Take a walk down the street and see how easy that is. I had, last week, I had a woman come, she appeared to be a visiting nurse, and she was looking for somebody who wasn't me, and she said she'd stopped at other homes. Now, I give you the fact that East Mountain Road is, is a little off-kilter, because some of the older homes were built and then filled in. I mean, it goes the one side... I mean, it goes, the one side of the street goes 1786, 88, 90, no, I'm sorry, 1786, 1788, 1800, back to 1790, and then 1794. And then you have an 850 stuck in the middle. Fortunately, I knew the people that, but I think it's time we, we start enforcing that. I know we got GPS, but it still could be the difference between life and death, and I think we need to start enforcing it because there's many, many homes that you cannot find the, the, the street number. And I would like an answer from each of you, if you're willing, during motions tonight to tell me which of the following, wait, whoops, sorry, Matt. Yeah, which of the following you think would bring more revenue? Property taxes following a countywide reassessment or an increase in local taxes via raising of the market value of the city or performing a HUP survey? I would like that. I know most times you ignore when you're asked to, to comment during motions, but since there's only one item being introduced on the agenda, maybe you'll have a little more time tonight. And then what do you think? The other thing I would like to know is the Scranton bypass. I would like to know what you think that impact will have on the city of Scranton and how this city and you people as our representatives are engaging in that dialogue. As a matter of fact, if anybody would like to, if they know anything about that, would like to share that now? No? Okay, well then, P E L?
Yeah, I'll talk about that in motions.
Okay. P E L, are they going to be coming on the first anniversary of their exit plan to tell us how we're doing and what they prognosis is for the last two years?
Yes.
When will that be? Next month?
Close to their first anniversary, which I think is in July, so.
June, June.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'll sit down and wait for your answers in motions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Mrs. Schumacher, based off your revenue question, I have to look into some of the other ones besides reassessment before I could give you an honest answer on where I feel on that. So I will do that and get back to you next week on that. And also for the Scranton bypass, I mean, we've been getting preliminary correspondence about them doing, you know, the engineering studies and stuff like that. So until we see any studies that are done, I mean, I wouldn't be able to comment on And also, one of the requests I gave to Mrs. Reed before the meeting was an explanation from the pave cut inspector as to why UGI was allowed to make a pave cut on Walnut Street in Pine Brook, not even a week after PA American Water finished paving the street. According to our pave cut ordinance, that shouldn't have been allowed unless for an emergency, so I wanted some clarification on that. And I also asked for an update on the Meadowbrook Culver Project regarding the Young and Kennedy's properties over in Green Ridge, so hopefully I could get that next week. Also, last week, Councilman Perry brought up the issue of decriminalizing marijuana, and I would just like to say that is something I'd absolutely be willing to support, and I'm just hopeful that in the next few weeks, we'll be able to start that conversation by reaching out to different stakeholders, especially Chief Graziano and District Attorney Mark Powell, to get their opinions on this issue. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Do you have any motions or comments?
A couple of comments. Mr. Bolzoni, I would fully expect the mayor to be sending down legislation to grant Mr. Bolzoni a residency waiver in the next few weeks, so we'll see when that gets here. On the Scranton bypass, I'm not a fan of bypasses, to be perfectly honest with you. I think that they take traffic and, and people away from the city, but I'd like to study that a little bit more. But generally speaking, I'm not a fan of the concept of bypassing large metropolitan areas like the city of Scranton. On the question about, that Mrs. Schumacher made about the reassessment, et cetera, let's see, for, as far as reassessment is concerned, obviously it's a revenue-neutral issue, so I think that in terms of growth, it will enhance our tax base because it will allow us for future growth, and I think that's really all we ever want. Plus the fact that, I know Mr. Elm would be thrilled to hear this, but also the fact that it will bring about tax equity, and that's also a positive for the market because the market wants to see that in order for the market to grow. As far as the HUP test is concerned, certainly that would increase our tax base because it would take a good hard look at all of the properties that are currently non-taxable or tax-exempt and treat them individually to find out once and for all, should they be tax-exempt. They've done it in Allegheny County, it worked out very well. It's a very simple procedure. You send letters out for each and every parcel that is considered tax-exempt, and you ask them why it should be that way and continue to be that way and have them prove the case. And then at that point, you have to probably go through an appeal process if there's disagreements, but I think that's certainly something that we built into the recovery plan, and it's something that we should continue to foster and see if we can get that thing moving. I know it's mostly an administrative issue, but this councilman is the one that actually had to put into the recovery plan, so I expect some action on that at some point. On decriminalization of marijuana, I know Councilman Perry discussed this last week. I'd like to give a couple points that advocates of decriminalization have been making for years. Number one, decriminalizing marijuana fees frees up police resources to deal with more serious crimes. Taxpayers spend between 7.5 billion and $10 billion per year arresting and prosecuting individuals for marijuana violations. Almost 90% of those arrests are for possession only. Number two, decriminalization also does not lead to greater marijuana use. Government studies conclude that decriminalization has had virtually no effect on either marijuana use or beliefs and related attitudes about marijuana among young people in states where this policy is currently in effect. And three, criminal laws prohibiting marijuana possession do not deter its use. Marijuana use remains constant despite high levels of enforcement, and there is no detectable relationship between changes in enforcement and levels of marijuana use over that time period. Now, those arguments certainly can be viewed as compelling, and of course they are, but there are always at least two sides to every issue. One can make the argument that this isn't even a local issue, but an issue for the state or federal government. However, as often the case, the state and federal government sends, seems to be a bastion for inaction, and local governments are always, are always left to act alone in many of these cases. To that point, six cities in Pennsylvania have already adopted similar decriminalization laws. They are Erie, York, Harrisburg, Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, and State College, and there are other cities currently considering adopting similar legislation. So while I'm not quite there with this issue, I do think it's time, as Councilman Perry has said and Councilman Donahue said tonight, to have a good, hard look at this issue, and maybe it's time to have an adult conversation and a full debate on the criminal, decriminalization of marijuana in Scranton. So I concur with my council colleagues, and it may be time to take that good, hard look, and maybe this city council happens to be the vehicle for that by bringing all the stakeholders together for a work session or a public caucus or even a public meeting of some sort. So I think the next step is for all of us to discuss how or if we would like to proceed as a council and even as a community, and then we go from there. So they're my comments on that issue, and I don't think I have anything else left for tonight, so that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, the street sweeper is scheduled to be in Trips Park, Dickens Street to Gibson Street, May 14th to May 18th. We discussed this a little bit in the caucus. I would like to know and inquire with the DPW. It was mentioned that we have, the new street sweeper is from the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority, so I would like to know, the last street sweeper that we were using, where is that? If it was broken down and we junked it, I would like clarification on that, on what happened to that sweep, second sweeper. Mr. Donahue mentioned this in his comments, the Walnut Street paving was on the news, and I have received a couple of calls about it. UGI ripped up the street after it was already paved a week earlier from the water company. So I would like to know from the city administration if UGI pulled the city pave cut permit. I would like a copy of that. And, you know, I, I know I've said this a lot of times before, but it just seems to me that the city is really asleep at the wheel here while the utility companies continue to take us for a ride. And I'd like to know, who is protecting the infrastructure of the city? We go through this problem every single summer and every single spring, and there just seems to be no communication and no one from the city administration who is actually holding the utility companies' feet to the fire and protecting our infrastructure and our tax dollars. I also sent a letter to the Pennsylvania Economy League, April 19th, regarding proceeds from the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority being deposited into the pension funds. If you remember, there was controversy there, and I still have not received an answer on that, so I would like to, Mrs. Reed, to send a second letter to Mr. Cross from the Economy League, and I would like an answer. I mean, they are our recovery coordinator, and I think not answering that question is kind of a cop-out. Also, you know, I, I asked for an update on our rentalordinance.com, this company that came in and was supposed to help the city with our rental registration ordinance, and we did receive correspondence, a copy of correspondence from Mr. Moran, who is the head of rentalordinance.com, to Mr. Bolzoni, the city business administrator, and it says, "Please be advised that Community Champions and rentalordinance.com have entered into a teaming agreement to assist the city of Scranton with the enforcement of the rental registration. Community Champions and rentalordinance.com would like to set up a status meeting with the city of Scranton on moving the rental registration project forward." So I would like from Mr. Bolzoni or someone in the administration, some clarification on this. I mean, we entered into an agreement with them. I voted against it for a number of different reasons, but we entered into an agreement with this company a year ago. So I'd like to know what happened, what went on the past year, and I did, I think we sent a letter last week asking for several things to be answered, so I would like also a copy of this teaming agreement to see what that is all about. Also, I sent a letter to the city administration, April 3rd, about Mr. Casciano, the former business administrator and his new position in OECD. I sent several questions, and I still have not received a response, so we'll send a second response there and see if anybody is going to answer that. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of items. First, Mr. Volz brought up the containers, and I did speak with him about it, and I do agree, if, if the city is going to enforce different laws on pods or storage containers, they do need to be applied consistently throughout the city. I do know there are a number of areas that have pods on the streets, and it certainly could be a dangerous issue. Secondly, on the marijuana issue, which I missed an exciting meeting last week, I agree with my colleagues regarding medicinal marijuana and Commissioner Cummings' comments, and they're, they're going after Commissioner Cummings for her lack of knowledge on that issue. I could certainly understand a opinion that's different of mine than mine. As my colleagues do, I support medical marijuana in our city. I think it's a resource for those who are sick, and I think it's a good business to bring into the city of Scranton, to create jobs, and we, we met with some of the firms that were interested in locating here, but what bothers me the most is that Commissioner Cummings was completely ignorant of the fact that in the state of Pennsylvania, medical marijuana was legalized quite some time ago. So that's what, to me, is most disturbing, that one of our elected officials didn't even know the status of the law, not so much her position that I disagree with. Some of my colleagues also mentioned decriminalization of recreational marijuana. I would not support recreational marijuana being legal in the city of Scranton. I would, however, like to hear our police chief's opinion on it, and certainly his opinion would carry a lot of weight, but I do not think until, as Councilman Evans mentioned, federal and state law change, that's something the city should pursue. So that's all I have to say on that issue. Regarding the Scranton bypass, a number of people have brought this up to me over the last, last week or so, and I know there's a petition going on online. Again, until we get more information on this bypass, it's hard to, to give an opinion, but I do see both sides of it. As anyone who lives in our area knows, traveling Interstate 81 from, particularly from Wilkes-Barre to Scranton during rush hour is a disaster. So I think a proposed bypass would certainly help with traffic issues in our region. On the other hand, as I believe Councilman Evans mentioned, bypassing the city may hurt local businesses. Businesses that might want to stop off traveling through Scranton on Interstate 81 to grab a bite to eat or patronize one of our restaurants or gas stations. So there's definitely two sides to the issue, something that I know all of us will continue to look at as that issue moves forward, but I do know there are petitions out there, and I've been contacted by a number of people about this. And finally, a couple months ago, I mentioned part of Donald Trump's tax law that would possibly give opportunity zones to areas like the city of Scranton, and this was published, this was, I think, 10 days ago in the newspaper. Governor designates opportunity zones in Scranton, Jessup, and Blakely. Governor Tom Wolf designated Blakely, Jessup, and parts of Scranton as opportunity zones or a new, new federal tax incentive program designed to spur economic development. The designations would stem from President Trump's tax cut program, where allow businesses or investors to delay or avoid paying capital gains taxes on investments made in opportunity zones. The programs aim to spur investors to direct eligible capital gains into new investments within these zones. Now, the zone that is in the city of Scranton is around downtown Scranton into the Hill section and into South Side. So I am happy to see that Scranton, the governor was able to designate much of our area as these zones. I am disappointed that the main avenue corridor between West Scranton and North Scranton was not included on this map. I think that would have been a prime area to be designated for these opportunity zones. I have had discussions with Bob Durkin, the head of the Chamber of Commerce, and the mayor, on possibly coming, coming up with some other local incentives to put out there, not only within these zones but citywide, to really spur development and get our economy going, but this is great news, so I did want to mention this, and hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll start to see some, some additional development in these areas that certainly need it, and that is all.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to enter into a loan-to-grant agreement and make a loan grant from the city of Scranton Business and Industry Loan Grant Program for project number as noted in an amount not to exceed $70,000 to discovery multiple intelligences preschool to assist an eligible project.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on public safety for adoption. File of the council number 16, 2018, establishing a no parking zone along the easterly side of Stafford Avenue, beginning approximately 45 feet north from its intersection with Willow Street and continuing 170 feet to allow for sight distance for a proposed driveway by Dale and Lisa Kramer for a property located at 623 Stafford Avenue.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the committee on public safety?
As temporary chairperson for the committee on public safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the committee on public safety for adoption. Resolution number 37, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department, and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency National Crime Statistics Exchange Program in the amount of $23,400.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the committee on public safety?
As temporary chairperson for the committee on public safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Here, or yes, sorry. I've been here, but yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.